Happy Valentine's Day to you too.
I think it's 14.
It is the 14th.
Good evening, welcome to the February 14th Valentine's Day 2024. As always, we're going to start off with our pledge, our prayer. It stood firm because of its strong foundation. But everyone who hears my teaching and does not apply it to his life can be compared to a foolish man who built his house on sand. When it rained and rained and the flood came, with wind and waves beating upon his house, it collapsed with a great crash and was swept away. This is compelling imagery. We have a choice between a sandcastle or a house built on a solid enduring foundation. May the Lord help us daily to build our lives on the unshakable foundation of the Word of God. Proclamation. I proclaim that God makes a distinction. He makes a difference between the righteous and the unrighteous, between those who serve Him and those who do not. I declare that I am the blessed person who bears the Lord. My children. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors Gibson?
Present.
Green?
Present.
West?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Mayor Roots?
Present.
Approval minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on the minutes? Not yet. Alright, so we do have.
And Davis, we're not here, so that's why they're not voting on those minutes.
Well, I think the proper way may to be still call our name and us to abstain from the vote.
That's the conversation to have with Mayor.
Solicitor, am I, am I right?
Counsel can vote on the minutes, not having attended the meeting as accurate as they are presented.
Have we all reviewed the minutes from the 27th of December?
Yes.
Yes, okay, then we'll all vote then.
Alright, and which will now include the January 2nd reorganization meeting. I have my first and I have my second on the table, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to roll, make the roll call. Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Abstain.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland, I mean, excuse me, Mayor Roots, my apology. Talking about the other minutes, alright.
Mr. Solicitor, you want to make the announcement on the executive sessions?
Is there, there's a request for an executive session?
No, we, on our agenda, we just want to announce that we have had.
Oh, okay.
Executive sessions.
Yes, we have had, I believe, two executive sessions.
Right, right on there. Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Monday, January 29th, Tuesday, January 30th, Monday, January 12th, correct.
Have you heard?
And we have to let them know what we.
We discussed legal and personnel matters.
Alright, public comment. On action items only, agenda items only.
Need my name and address? No, name's David.
Did you sign in?
Yes.
Okay, let me have that sheet, please. There's no signing for the.
So that's for the.
Alright, um.
I'm making it known that we're starting the three minute timer now, Mr. Mayor? Yes. So then state your name and address, please.
David Cronheim, 1100 Block Colhane Street, Chester, PA. These agenda items are generally too vague to know what's going on, even looking at online with the resolutions. So let me be specific. The first one, UHI addendum. I'd like to know how much does this contract cost the city each year? And how much remaining American Rescue Plan money is left? Let me go through it and then you can comment. The second, the agreement with Remington and Varick. What services will be provided for what projects? It defines it as special projects engineer. Can't be much vaguer. Third thing, the approval for PICO. Why does PICO want to put in new gas lines? Are they replacing electric services? Fourth thing, renovation IT services. Like a list of all hardware, software, and network equipment to be repaired or replaced? What tangible benefits will the city get at conclusion of the project? For example, will all city email now be backed up as it was in last year, I believe? Fifth thing, the property lists. I'd like to see those property lists and their estimated current value. The deliberative agenda said these properties were attached, they weren't. This agenda with the attached resolutions are far too vague to explain. I want what those resolutions entail. Please attach all relevant documents in the future and devote at least a paragraph explaining each agenda item rather than a sentence. This is done by county council, if you want an example. A clearest explanations of these agenda items is required by the PA Opens Record Act, also known as the PA Sunshine Law. Thank you.
Any other public comments on agenda items only?
Executive session. Okay, well, just to let you all know, I've already informed the mayor that I'm requesting an executive session before we get to number two. Of the resolution.
So we can temporarily adjourn the meeting for that executive session.
So with our resolutions, let's start with number one.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester enter into a one-year master services agreement with UHY Consulting Incorporated to provide professional services to assist the city with meeting all of the American Rescue Plan Act compliance and reporting guideline requirements beginning February 2022 and ending March 31st, 2023. And whereas the parties later agreed to extend the original agreement until January 31st, 2024. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the addendum to the National Services Agreement to extend said agreement from April 2027 or until the last reporting period to the Department of Treasury is completed as required by the American Rescue Plan Act. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute said addendum for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
So you wanted to take the executive session before I read this? Um, I, I did request an executive session for this.
Alright, we're going to go on to executive session.
Yeah, I'm gonna just straighten it back up. Nobody wants a job? They're all messing up there. Maybe I'll take one just to see what they talking about. This is a patrol.
I'm not a very.
I'm not a very.
Listen, they wish they could bring the money down to the. It's not a kind of plan.
Listen, I, I'm not a. I'm, I'm not like that. I'm somebody who's. They're lying about. I'm not saying, I'm not saying. Hold on. They're putting it down. They don't need to. It's a bigger. Yeah. So I'm not a very. I want to. Thank you. I'm just trying to. For the minute, I never. I didn't get anything working. They break it in there. Like. They just. They should now be for a county. Um, everybody's. 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 See? I'm not. You're not. You're not. You're not. You're not. Well, nah, nah, nah. Nah, nah, nah. We have problems. Very hard. What if you're. You know, they say. Well, you know, it's not a problem. It's what it was. So, no, 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 that's what I'm saying. The usual way, the usual. I don't think the usual is that. No. I got a little bit of a. Was what we don't say. It's what we don't say. It's what we don't say. That's what we do. Here. It's all that we can do. I'm sorry, that's fair. We don't. I'm sorry. We don't. We don't. We don't. Sure. We don't. We don't say the same thing. We don't. 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 We don't.
Alright.
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, Madam Clerk, resolution number two.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the agreement with Remington and Vernick Engineers II Incorporated, otherwise known as Remington and Vernick Engineers, to provide services to the City of Chester as the special projects engineer in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to begin upon the execution of the agreement and to end no later than December 31st, 2024. Further, it does authorize the proper city official to execute said agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Even further, said agreement is contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Nobody didn't. Nobody done first or second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second? Alright, that one died on the vine, next.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to PICO for the installation of new natural gas services with the line extending 300 feet within the City of Chester at the following location. West Front Street from Concord Avenue to Penn Street. Further, said permit is contingent upon PICO's compliance with all of the conditions outlined by the city engineer and performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council, specifically the following. Number one, PICO performs a half mill and overlay on all road openings exceeding 100 feet or three patches within 100 feet. Number two, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continued operation of city streets. And number three, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as any other required permits.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept a quote received through Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN, from Cisco Sharp LLC for IT improvements which include hardware, software, and network upgrade for the City of Chester, known as Project 53 and 22, in the amount of $1,024,500, which is to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA funds. Further, the city has complied with all KPN bidding requirements. Further, the contract is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Urban Redevelopment Law 35 PS Section 1709K states that a redevelopment authority has the following power. To sell, lease, or otherwise transfer any real property located outside of a redevelopment area and subject to approval by the local governing body, any real property in a redevelopment area. Provided that with respect to a redevelopment area, the authority finds that the sale, lease, or other transfer of any part will not be prejudicial to sell or lease of the other parts of the redevelopment area, nor be in any other way prejudicial. Excuse me, there's eyelash, something in my eye. Need a tissue. I wear contacts, there was something. My apologies, everyone. To the realization of the redevelopment proposal approved by the governing body. And whereas the Chester Redevelopment Authority, CRA, owns vacant parcels of land identified on the attached list of properties. And whereas the parcels are poor candidates for assemblage of larger, developable parcels for various reasons such as minimal size, isolated locations, and little economic worth. And whereas from time to time, the CRA receives requests to purchase such parcels for uses. And whereas from time to time, the CRA receives requests to purchase such parcels for uses such as your side yards, et cetera. And whereas the CRA staff evaluates such requests to determine that the sale, lease, or transfer of property will not be prejudicial to other developments in the city. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, number one, that the parcels identified on the attached list of properties are approved for sale by the Chester Redevelopment Authority for development that is consistent and compliant with the applicable zoning district and zoning requirements for that area as established by the Chester City zoning ordinances then and in effect. Any proposed CRA property sales for redevelopment from the list of properties that need any form of zoning relief, examples, variances, special exceptions, et cetera, are approved for sale, provided that the developer must obtain both CRA board approval in addition to applying for and obtaining the zoning relief from the zoning hearing board. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Before we move on to old business, I'd like to make a motion. One of the things I promised that the residents is that I'll be transparent, and so I would like to be transparent in our selection process, and so I'm going to make a motion that we put out an RFP to hire an engineer firm to deal with our special projects for the ARPA.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I have a comment. You're making a motion that the city puts out an RFP for an engineering firm to work on ARPA projects only.
To handle special projects, as I said, in the previous agenda item.
Okay, roll.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
No.
All right, old business. Councils, do you have any old business you'd like to share? For those of you who, this may be your first council meeting, but we've injected in this portion of the council meeting, is an opportunity for council and myself to present old news, or old business, new business. And, um...
One of the old business, I will say, and I know our solicitor did mention that we had three executive sessions. One of the executive sessions I called, and just to give you a little information, in 2022, when the receiver filed for bankruptcy, I know the city, they also filed a motion to fight the bankruptcy, or to go against the bankruptcy. And I asked that if council would move forward and, um... If we would take our motion back so that the bankruptcy process can move forward. I think the only way the city can move forward is if we go through the bankruptcy process and if we work with the receiver so that way we can get the city back on track. And so I did ask council that they would support me in removing our motion from the courts, so that way we can move forward with the bankruptcy process and not protest against it. So, just wanted to give you that information.
So moved.
No, I'm just letting them know what happened.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, though.
Any other old business? I'll share that this week, the MFRAC, you might have heard that term, the Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Committee, that's chaired by the, well, there's several of us on that board, myself, a new member, Councilman Davis, we have the receiver representative from county, the county, and from the state. And the topic this week was homeroom charter. So, the city operates under a homeroom charter. It's the equivalent of a constitution of the United States, but it's for our little city. And I encourage you guys to listen in on that. You can find it in a couple spots, but chesterreceivership.com is the official receivers site, chesterreceivership.com. So what you'll discover, what you'll learn is, you know, what the charter is, some of the issues that our charter has, and that it's up to you guys if the charter is ever going to be changed. It has to be changed on a ballot referendum. So, if you recall going to vote in years past, you'll have your candidates to vote for, and in the back they have those questions. That's considered a referendum. So, there's a move to, uh, possibly make some adjustments if need be to the city charter, the homeroom charter. I'd like to recognize someone in the audience, Devin Walls. Hi, Devin. I just want to recognize him for the fact that he just put out a movie. He made a movie right here in the City of Chester. It was on...
What's it?
What was the network?
What's it?
Tubi, thank you.
Tubi.
And I heard it did so well the first weekend, it was on Tubi, that he got a phone call from Netflix. I don't know how that worked out, but I just want to congratulate you for your continuing efforts in the arts. And finally, with old news and it's, it's, it's ongoing work for us, and that's upgrading or updating our website. So if you continue to look at the chestercity.com website, you'll see, um, stuff beginning to populate, like the calendar of council meetings and agenda meetings. We just took our photos, was it last week? We all looked great, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
So we had, you didn't. So we had a local guy, Dave Brown, for those of you who know, who know him, he set this up like a real studio and took hundreds of photos of not just mayor and council, but every employee who wanted a headshot. So that was a great moment. And, forms, forms that you would fill out to do anything that the city would require, whether it's, uh, park permits, parade permits, that type of stuff. They're being updated on a darn near daily basis. And finally, the governor, Governor Shapiro was here once again this week. We love when the governor comes, that we can get in his ear and tell him that we're really counting on his help to help us out of the situation we're in. Got to give a little prop to our state rep who continues to badger him to come to Chester, and, and he seems to listen, so that's great. How about new business? Anyone have any new business? Well, I do. In an effort to reach more of the general public, on Wednesday, February 21st, we're having a lunch with the mayor and, and council folks. It's at noon, at 1:30. There's Justin. Justin, how do people, uh, sign up for that? I know we have a couple slots left. The topic this session, Wednesday, February 21st, is going to be specific to, uh, engaging block captains around the city. So we want to get your input, your ideas, your thoughts on a block captain program.
Yeah, so, uh, the mayor, uh, wanted to have about biweekly, kind of smaller lunches with residents around different topics, um, just as a way to have more informal discussions. And so the first topic that, uh, as he just mentioned, uh, is going to be about block captains, and, uh, as he said, it'll be next Wednesday from noon to 1:30 here in City Hall. But we're trying to keep these small so that the conversations can be more useful. Um, and so if you want to try to be a part of one of those lunches, you can contact us, uh, at mayor@chestercity.com, or you can call us on our number here at City Hall, which is 610-447-7718. And if it fills up, you know, we'll put you on a waiting list for, uh, follow-up lunches on other topics as well, so.
Thank you. Yes. Also, on 2/21, I'm going to have, uh, office hours that, that evening. I think we're, said four to six. So, using the same numbers, the same email address, mayor@chestercity.com, and the phone number, I can never remember that he just, just said. Come on in, give you 15, 20 minutes to just address whatever you want to address. Had a good time a couple weeks ago when we did it, had three people come in, had some issues, none of them took more than 10 minutes, and everybody left happy. That's all I have. Anybody else think of anything they want to share? New business? No? Okay. Okay.
So going into some new business in relation to the MFRAC meeting that was, I was also a part of, but couldn't receive the direct link, so I was on via Facebook. So those of you who are on the meeting seeing me attend via Facebook, um, I had a personal conversation with the receiver on Monday. We have, um, biweekly meetings every Monday in regards to, um, the city's bankruptcy status, um, economic development, and so forth. Um, and the receiver has tasked me with bringing up to $15 million of additional revenue into the city. So to mention businesses, um, like Mr. Walls, who's shooting movies right here in our cities, um, I'm encouraging small business owners, nonprofits, everyone to come in, have a conversation with me. I've been speaking with the CEO of the Charter School, Dr. David Clark, as well as the COO, Mr. Battinieri, in regards to coming together and bringing in a recycling program back into our schools. Because of, for those of you who don't know, Chester is less than 3% a recycling city, which is like almost last in Delaware County. So we're going to work on bringing that program back to this, um, our school districts, as well as trying to bring some more money, um, to our community. But it doesn't take one mind, it doesn't take one conversation, it takes a whole community. So, as the receiver has tasked me with this challenge of bringing, you know, upwards to 15 to 20 million dollars in revenue to the city, I asked that, you know, I reach out to business owners and local community leaders to, you know, give us all a hand with that endeavor. So, that's part of the new business that we have going on financially for the city, and I wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
That's good. Uh, I'm going to come back. I forgot to mention that there's, uh, police officer examinations coming up. It already started February 1st through February 29th, except for President's Day, which is this coming Monday, uh, between the hours of nine and 12 and one and four, Monday through Friday. It's a $35 money order, our cashier's check to the City of Chester at the time of obtaining your, your application. So, just come to City Hall, see the clerk, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And she is right there at the lobby area. She can get you an application. We really do want to encourage our local people right here in Chester to become police officers. So, for those of you who know, people who would be interested, I will say that I wish the... Oh, there he is, Mr. Commissioner, why don't you come up for a second and let them know what to expect when they do apply? And how you've, uh, kind of altered the physical, uh, piece of this.
Good evening. So, um, one thing I will tell you that I'm proud about, I did check the applicant list already, we've had a total of 12 applications, uh, picked up, and we have four city residents in the past. You hardly see no one from the city come out and take the test. We used to go with, uh, academy standards. I've have reached out to the state, and we have, uh, downgraded the PT portion. Also, there's a written exam, but the first part is you got to get through the PT. Um, after PT portion, you will come and take a written exam. Any kind of tutoring, any kind of help I could give anyone, please come see me. Um, like I said, in the history, second generation police officer, you seen a lot of individuals, uh, the Freemans, Wendell Butler, people who were homegrown, come out and be police officers. I do get a lot of complaints, you know, all we have is these white officers that are in this city. If you want to make a difference, come out, make a difference in our city, please.
All right, thank you. And finally, we'll, soon, mayor and council will be deliberating on a ethics policy for the city. That was part of what we talked about here in the, uh, executive session. We do have ethics language throughout several pieces of documentation, whether it's the city charter, the administrative code, but we really need to get it all on one page. So, we'll be looking for a draft sometimes, uh, maybe later this week, early next week, so we could, uh, the intent is to vote on that in our next council meeting. It's your turn. It is time for public comment. I have the list here. Was there anyone who came in a little late that wants to add themselves to the list? Uh, well, hold on. I'll just go down the list here. I want to say Judy Wang? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
I'm just going to go on the record once again and let everybody know they have three minutes, and I'll be keeping the time.
Uh, hi.
Hold on, Mr. Williams. Just state your name and address, and we'll just add it.
Yep, Gary Williams, uh, 632 Avenue of the States, Real Estate Office, Berkshire Hathaway.
My name is Judy Wang, the 34 East 7th Street, Chester Pizzeria.
We're across the street from each other.
All right, uh, here's my statement.
Give me one more. Ms. Wang, if you're going to do the talking, can you talk into the microphone?
Yes.
Into the tape, and I can hear you.
All right, thank you. Sure, thank you. Hi, my name is, uh, Judy. I have been running the Chester Pizzeria for 36 years. After pandemic, I noticed increase in the amount of people littering and panhandling outside of my business. They are also publicly urinating and defecating on the sidewalk directly outside of my business. I have told these people to leave so then they don't bother my customers, and sometimes my customer will ask me to tell them to leave. When I do this, they don't leave and will just threaten me. I have called the cops multiple times, even though they respond and tell the person to leave, the person just come back as soon as the cops leave. This situation is severely hurting my business because the customer don't want to deal with panhandling and harassment. Also, it's a public health hazard when you have people defecating and urinating on the sidewalk. I'm asking the city to please help me with this situation. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I'm actually right across the street from, uh, Ms. Judy here. I have, uh, three different businesses in, uh, 632, uh, barber shop, um, salon, and the, in the real estate office. And her problem is actually my problem. Uh, when she has people hanging out in front of her business, please come in, then people don't want to come to my real estate business, um, because they see the stuff that's going on there, it goes somewhere else. So, when she has an issue, it's my issue, and it's everybody's issue. Thank you.
Charlie Padano?
Good evening. Uh, mayor, councilwoman, men. On behalf of myself and Ms. Judy, I live right across the street, and I see this every day when I come home from work. Seven days a week, people just standing outside her business and panhandling. And they're selling drugs on the corner, and it's disrespectful for the police station being right down the street. And I just don't get it. I see it every day from my window. They go in the parking lot, they go and smoke their crack, or pot, or whatever anymore, but they got, it's got to stop. It's got to stop. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Susan Harmon? You're not going to read all that, are you?
Excuse me? Oh, my. My name is Susan Harmon, 719 Pennell Street, Chester. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pleasure to meet with you tonight, members of the City Council, Mayor... Members of the City Council, Mayor Stefan Roots, it's an honor. I have about three, sorry, three different proposals to make. First, you all may be familiar with the song "Lift Every Voice and Sing", a poem originally by James Weldon Johnson. And I propose that the city of Chester, state of Pennsylvania, and actually US, use this anthem, which is referred to as the Black National Anthem, to be sung at every school meeting, government meeting, et cetera, in place of what is currently our national anthem. That's proposal number one. It was sung recently at the Super Bowl, if you all were watching that. Secondly, my proposal is that, that Chester fly what's called the Missing in Action Flag, the MIA flag, next to the US flag and Pennsylvania flag and Chester flag. And that this flag be named in honor of Senator John McCain of Arizona. Secondly, a third, I want a request, I actually am requesting you to create the Office of Public Advocate for the city of Chester. And part of the reason for this is I was examining what is the 2024 proposed draft of Chester's receipts from HUD, the Community Development Block Grants. And after studying it, where Chester is supposedly going to receive about a million, two hundred thousand something, it's clear that Chester's gotten the shaft from the US government and the state of Pennsylvania. If Pennsylvania is not promoting, that we receive one hell of a lot more than the paltry sum that's mentioned in the report. I'm very interested in having businesses benefited in Chester because that's the only way we're going to reduce the horrendous poverty rate of forty-three percent of the children of Chester living in poverty. That's horrendous. And in this proposed grant from HUD, they only say, hey, Chester, you're going to get a ten thousand dollar grant for businesses. That's not my idea of what's fair and equitable.
What's your last point, Ms. Harmon? Your time's up. One more point, one more point. Your time has expired.
My last point is, by the way, I'm running for US President. So I hope you'll vote for me, for the People's Party. It's okay if you're a Democrat, it's okay if you're a Republican or an independent. Everybody qualifies to vote for me for the People's Party. And anyone that cares to volunteer, I'm receptive to your volunteering because right now I'm on a very low budget. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate. And, oh, by the way, I have certain exhibits to just give to the council, maybe to the mayor, in terms of what I propose to do to make Chester a thriving community
Okay, Ms. Harmon.
and bring it out of bankruptcy. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Brown?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, the floor is yours. Tough act to follow.
Good evening. To the residents, the mayor, Roots and council. I'm going to read through. You can stop me when you want. These are my thoughts, I kind of gathered together. For City Council and Mr. Roots, I have like four points down here for you to do. The first is to create an environment of trust, promote teamwork, motivate by leading.
Ms. Margaret, either step back a little bit from the mic because it's, I'm not understanding you and I'm not sure if the tape will get you right. Start over.
Okay. I jotted down some thoughts and things, okay? One is to create, create an environment of trust, promote teamwork, to motivate by leading and demand accountability and communication, empower staff and promote excellence. I know there is still much discussion concerning administrative changing that have transpired within the environment of City Hall, Chester's public service to her residents and community at large. Many feel many felt and do feel there is no need for change and resist every attempt to keep change from occurring, while many others embrace and make every effort to comply in trying to make your mission of a different, brighter, happier, growing and successful Chester a better place to live in and visit. Change is one thing that remains constant in life. Not a day goes by without some change occurring, which affects each of our lives. Change will bring different challenges and requirements that various departments need to adapt to. Change creates frustration, but each of us just try and consider a walk in Mayor Roots' shoes with council to see what action you would do to meet the changing needs with the resources available. Mr. Roots, City Council, also Mr. Dowery and Ms. Kazim, please, for the new growth and justice do all of Chester residents strive to demonstrate core values of mercy, excellence, respect, integrity and trust as you continue to provide support to each other and those you serve, us, the residents of Chester City. Thank you.
Good job. Right in, right there at the wire. Ms. Tyra Starr?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you today or this evening? Happy Valentine's Day. I am standing here on behalf, and if the merchants would like this, come up and stand with me, we can do so. We are representing the Chester City Business District as merchants here on the Avenue and Edgemont Avenue. I want to read to you a few of our concerns and we will always present these concerns to the council until we begin to see changes being made in our downtown area. Safety, more police presence, foot patrol and bike patrol is needed in this area. Beautification, facade programs, better lighting, removal of trash by the city. Parking enforcement is needed. People are parking their cars here all day long, getting all the trains and going to work. Business owners have nowhere to park. I am also asking for loading and unloading signs only on the avenue so that those who do own businesses, excuse me, I had dental work done recently and I'm still healing, can have a place for their vendors to load and unload. Right now, the sidewalks are becoming parking lots. And when you continue to park on a sidewalk, what happens? The streets mess up, the light fixtures mess up. SEPTA police presence is needed. Security cameras are needed, especially by the SEPTA bus terminal. And then we also wanted to know, will the receiver declare our city bankrupt? Fred Green did touch on that a little bit. And these are just a few of our concerns. We have many, but we are now starting to get together once a month to meet as merchants because we want to see our downtown area thrive, we want to see it successful, we want to see more foot traffic. And the only way to do that is to make sure our city and our downtown area looks the best that it can possibly look. Nobody wants to do business in a filthy area. Nobody wants to invest in a filthy area. We got to clean up the people that are coming here. I don't know where they're coming from, maybe Philadelphia are cleaning up their streets and now they're bringing them here to Chester. I'm not sure, it's just a theory. But we need to see where these people are coming from because they are coming here by the busloads and they're creating havoc, mayhem, foolishness, crime, drugs, all that stuff. So these are just a few of our concerns. And we would like to have a meeting with the mayor. I guess we'll have to schedule that, call the mayor's office and see if we can have a meeting with you. Yes?
That's your three minutes, but, but what do you got?
I just got something real short. A lot of us share the same concerns that you expressed about the drugs, the loitering and all those different things happening downtown. We actually seen an influx of people who aren't from Chester downtown committing a lot of those crimes and a lot of the stuff that's happening downtown. And as Tyra said, we've watched buses and vans drop people off in downtown and we question them, like, where are you from? They're from different parts of the county. Where there, people don't want them there and they just dropping them in Chester. And right now, we've been having our own meetings about hiring private security to help us in these things that's happening downtown. I spoke to Gretzky, I spoke to a lot of you up here at different times and it's just like, we just need a little bit of help to, you know, I mean, straighten up the downtown. So we want to see what can happen, when we can meet, and we want to do it as urgently as possible.
So I'm going to comment on, on, on this right now because I know you guys might have to go back to your businesses. But I have met with several of the business owners here, myself, Chief of Staff. We've heard just about every issue that, that they've discussed and we've, you know, helped remedy some. A lot of it is still in progress. For those of you who don't know and don't appreciate the fact that the downtown area is being inundated with, with migrants. They're, like, like you said, they're coming in by the busloads. It's not just the Chester, but other, other communities, but these are things that we have to deal with. I am really excited to see you guys come together as a group though, so that when we do meet again, we're going to be meeting with the entire, you know, business community. I think that's the smarter way to go, as opposed to talking to two or three of you and, you know, not knowing if the word is getting around. So I am absolutely open to, to myself and council, I'm sure. You know, we all care about the business community. It's right outside the window behind us. It's, 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 it is what leads to here. I can say in a nutshell, like, there is some money dedicated from our ARPA funds for facade improvements on the downtown area. And I think there's a few people who know about that. But to the point, and the overall point is that I'm really happy to see you guys come together as a group. And, you know, future meetings will be, you know, group meetings and we'll make sure we, we schedule those on a regular basis, track the progress, track the issues because we absolutely care and need the business community to be strong right here in downtown Chester. What, over town, okay. What's running through my head is just how different the landscape looks from last year to this year. And we just can't allow this trend to continue. We have to take control of our downtown area. You guys are straight up ambassadors out there. You out there, you see what's going on. We listen to you and, you know, we definitely want to work with you. Okay, go ahead. You've got three seconds. See, you already went over three seconds. Come on, what is it, real quick? We all know that, we all know that. We know that. All right, now if you want to bring it back.
If I could say something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
And let me just say, I appreciate all the downtown business owners for coming here today because I travel a lot and most places I go to, they're downtown where their over town is the best street in their city. And so we got to get back to that and I talked to Chief Leitner and Mike Galante about doing that. And I don't know if you got, if you can give a thirty-second spill, Chief or Mike, about what you guys have coming to downtown and explain to them the facade program that you guys are putting in place, Chief?
So real quick, I did speak to a few of you downtown, over town in reference to the facade program. We're in the process of hiring someone that will run the program. We're looking at investing about two million dollars in facades for the over town. So as soon as we get that person on board and get the policies and procedures in place, we'll be having that individual contacting each and every one of you. Our intent is all those boards that are on Avenue of the Estates, get them replaced with windows, roll gates, facade program, all of that, as much as we can do with the two million. We have also met with the state and the feds as far as getting some additional funding to help with offsetting some of those funds. So stay tuned, we'll be in touch as soon as we get the person on board.
Thank you. For those of you who don't understand what facade improvements mean, like, this business community has done a heck of a job gutting out some of these old buildings and have phenomenal spaces beyond that front door. But as you ride down Avenue of the Estates from, let's say, Seventh to the front door here, it, it, the outside does not match the beauty on the inside. So congrats to you guys who have done the work, bought the buildings, gutted them out, turned them into magnificent performance spaces, restaurants, places to do business, entertainment centers. But what we have to do is when people ride down the street, they feel that same luster, you know, on the outside. So that's what facade really does. It takes out broken windows and puts in new windows. It puts up bricks. I got to say, we are lucky to have good sidewalks down there. But we also need to be safe and protected. So that's, that's what a facade program is really all about. Deborah Plummer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here concerning about the Nova Vista, the four houses that's in the, what is called the Town House. They put trees in the back of, I guess we'll call the landmark. It was landmark, but is Development Authority owns it?
Are you talking about the new houses that was just built?
No. I'm talking about the Town House right there at the beginning of Nova Vista.
When you first, when you first enter.
Right. Okay, and I was down here and a girl named Kim, she's supposed to have checked it out. Supposed to have sent someone there to see where the trees were and also supposed to have been sending stuff to you, Portia, and I already sent. You know, if you ever got it, but we sent emails to you concerning about the trees. There was a lady, I mean, that lady next door, her whole car got smashed, demolished. My car got messed up. So what I'm saying to you is, who responsible for that? Because I can show you the trees, what they look like right now.
Well, as it stands right now, it would have to go to Mr. Leonard Leitner, the Chief of Staff there. Leonard Leitner, the Chief of Staff, and then he'll direct the inquiry to the proper department.
So in other words, you didn't get the email?
I, I may have gotten it, but we've been in transition, so as it stands now... So, as it stands now, the council persons no longer take your inquiries. It'll have to, you'll contact the chief of staff, Mr. Leonard Leitner, and then he will contact the proper department.
Okay.
I know you used to call it me.
Uh-uh, uh-uh. So, now, who's supposed to be finishing up Nova Vista and beautifying it? That never was finished up.
Maybe the sign there, the broken?
I mean, the work. Work reminds, it's supposed to be painting, and it's supposed to be doing the cement. And the two ladies are here. And I talked to them. And nothing was done. So, that's been over a year? Better?
Again, you know, Mr. Leonard Leitner will take your concerns and will, and he'll get it done.
I mean, you passing a meal with this man?
I'm, I'm...
On both occasions?
No, I don't want to, but unfortunately, that's how it is.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get some clarity out of this because I'm getting shafted.
I know.
I'm getting shafted all the way around.
I know.
You are? You know that?
I have to, Debbie.
No. No, somebody got to do something.
Ms. Plummer, your time is expired, but we do want to address your concern.
Oh, yeah, unless you would do that to me for this answer.
So, the person that you should share your information?
Oh, walk in the corner, honey, and share with him?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Name's David Kronheim. First off, in response to January council meeting comments, Mr. Green said something about he's here to run the city. Mr. Green, you are not here to run the city, you're control it. You are here to serve the city minimally, to see that the city council gets essential services and quickly goes from bankruptcy to a solid financial footing. I would like for next month agenda items outlawing incineration, that would close Covanta, which is 30 years overdue, and it would also force Cora to buy all equipment, including anaerobic digesters and space for pools so the burning sewage is no longer needed. I would also like outlawed LNG export terminals, putting people's health above profits. I would also like to know the second agreement, the second agenda item with agreement with Remington and Vernick. I would like to know what these special projects engineers are doing for up to $200,000, and what happened with this executive session? The council apparently doesn't think Remington and Vernick agreement is worthwhile and wants to pursue yet another RFP. Let me say one other thing. I think Ken Schuster should resign. In the last administration, he did not stop Kirkland from repeatedly silencing public comments. He did not prevent the PFS-7 no-bid parking contract or prevent the Covanta 2017 host fee contract, which resulted in reduced city income and allowed Covanta to set the terms so that the city administration was basically working for the vendors rather than the residents.
Good evening, everybody, and happy Valentine's Day. I'm Bernadette Raymond. I live at 1206 Beverly Lane. I've been here to several meetings, and I talked to Mayor Roots about our streetlights, where they're still not on. We have no lights on our street. I don't understand what's the delay, why we don't have streetlights. Also talked to you about the big pothole in the alley behind Beverly Lane, which is by DeMarco's. It's still a big pothole. They put a little bit of stuff in, but that washed away. So, we need that fixed. Also, I asked you about how many people can live in a house, which I never got a response to. So, as of the last meeting, when I asked, I guess it was okay that 20 or 30 people can live in a home, which is causing friction with me. I've been there 13 years. I'm buying mine. They're renting. Those houses, when they were built, were supposed to be purchase-only, not renters. I can hear you 24/7, running up and down the steps, throwing balls against the wall. I don't have to hear that. I can turn my music on and blast them out if I want to, but that's not what I'm about. I want peace. I'm buying, they're renting. I don't care if you had 90 people in a house. I don't have to hear everything you're doing. Nothing is getting done about it. I'm not going to sit in my house and call 911 every time there's a problem. I'm not going to do that. That's a waste of my time, and it's a waste of the police officer's time when they got other things to do. How long do I have to take and deal with all this noise, the trash, the disrespect? I'm not. I pay the $37.50 fine and do what I got to do. It's unfair that the residents that are doing right in Chester have to deal with this. I got to come out my house every day or every other day and clean up dog poop. I don't even have a dog. We need signs up there. If you walk your dog, your dog poop, clean it up. You got kids out there playing in the dog poop. It's unsanitary. It's unfair. It's unfair for the residents in Chester that are doing right. I was born and raised here. My family was born and raised here. All I knew as a kid was Chester. When I got older, I moved back. I love Chester. Chester was my home. But now, I'm ready to leave. But I ain't going to get the value for my house for the mess I got next door to me. It's going to deflate my value of my home. I get out and clean my yard, clean my house, clean my porch, all the time. And I got to deal with somebody else's mess. It's unfair. Alls I'm asking you to step up to the plate and do something. Like I told you, work with us, we work with you. You don't want to work with us? Hey, we just do what we have to do.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward, I just have one quick question.
Hold on one second, councilman. I want to make a comment on Ms. Raymond.
Oh, you want, go ahead.
Because, Ms. Raymond? Am I saying that correctly, Ms. Raymond? I had a conversation with a gentleman who's writing a book on the city of Chester, Mr. Brian Alexander. And he brought up exactly what you just mentioned in regards to, you were born here, you were raised here, you live here because you choose to live here. The pride and joy that people in the city of Chester take is second to none. He asked me the same question as a 26-year-old young man, you know, with opportunities and options wide open. You know, why do I choose to serve my community? Why do I choose to be a homeowner in Chester? Why do I choose to choose to live here? Because the amount of pride and the way I love the city of Chester. So, I understand where you're coming from. And as a council, as a community, it's our job to help support you and protect you. So, that's something that I feel as though, from the conversation I had yesterday until it was transpired here today, that should be number one on our to-do list as the mayor and council. And the reason your question didn't get answered from the mayor, I can't address that. But, I'm letting you know, you know, in this city council meeting, you know, adult to adult, that I hear you, I understand you, and that we need to do a better job.
I forgot one. The new trash cans that you gave us?
Not me.
The new trash cans that the city gave us. I put my trash out on Sunday at 6:19. Monday morning, that trash can was gone. I called over here twice. They told me, "Street's empty." Nobody answered the phone. I left a message. I called back and I left a message at the front desk, and they were supposed to transfer that message. So, I just want you to know that the orange and black trash can you gave me, somebody took it, I'm not responsible for it, and I'm not paying.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah.
Make sure that this gentleman gets your address before you, Mr. Alexander. And we'll make sure you get another trash can.
I just have a quick concern. I know a number of residents come here to all of the council meetings this year. And, you know, in previous administrations, there was always a question and answer with the mayor or council. You know, residents can come and ask your questions. Now, the residents come and they ask their questions, but there's no system in place for us to answer the questions. And I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, have you done it too prematurely where you had stopped the question and answer or the portion where the residents can answer the mayor's questions, the mayor and council questions? So, is there a plan in place or is there a process where we can post the answers to your questions online or have some kind of option where the residents can get their answer, their questions answered? Because currently, if they keep coming back the same week with the same questions, they're not getting their answers. So, I believe we need to come up with some kind of system in place where we can address the residents and we can answer them properly.
This is a public comment period. I've instituted that this is public comment, not Q and A. If you come here with questions, I have required every department head to be here to answer your questions. So, as we directed you to this person for your trash can, everybody's here. Everybody's here. They're required to be here at every council meeting, all our, all our directors. On Valentine's night, they've shown up. They're here. They're here for you. What we want to do, though, is to be out in the public in your neighborhoods more. We want to do public hearings, and we're going to bring on a, a community liaison to start to set those up. Yes, the same people, many of the same people show up to city council meetings on a frequent basis. That's good for you and bad for hundreds of others who can't make it to council meetings. So, yes, we, mayor and council, are going to meet you out in your neighborhoods so you could have the time that you need. Not three minutes, but as much time as you need to get your questions asked. We can gather those questions if you would like to put something together to share those questions with others. I think it's a smart idea because many of the questions, problems, concerns, that you have, your neighbor has, your guy across town has. It shouldn't just be us answering your question when many of the concerns we have in this town are shared by many. So, that's the direction that we're going. For the purposes of city council meetings, it's to handle city business. That's why we're here. This is what city council is all about. You guys have the opportunity to witness us take care of city business. In the setup of city council, you have an opportunity to give comments on how the city does business, to thank us, to chide us, to state what's on your mind. So, that's how city council will be conducted. But, to the point of those of you who want questions answered, I have not seen any city council other than here just take questions. And the reason that they don't is, more times than not, they can't be adequately answered or even asked in three minutes, but answered. So, we do want to create an environment for you guys to get in front of us when you need to. That's what the lunchtime meetings are about, where you can come in. That's what the office hours are about. And like I said, we're going to be around all parts of the city, whether it be churches, rec centers, boys and girls clubs, so you guys can come in and speak with us. Chief, could you come to the mic for a hot second, please? I'm not real familiar with, with building codes. But, to her question as to how many people can live in a house, is there anything on the books that indicate how many people can live in a house? Is that a landlord responsibility when a renter fills out a lease as to how many people can live in a house?
So, that's a, it's not a simple answer because it depends on the type of unit. It depends on the size of the unit, the number of bedrooms. So, that's not a simple answer. We'd have to look at the actual dwelling unit to make that determination. But from a standpoint of, is there a set, like, occupancy requirement for any type of resident? No. But for commercial space, yes. But again, that's where the bedroom, bedroom counts and things like that would come into place. So, I can't give you a solid answer on your particular unit.
Okay, so, if I heard you right, if I take this room and the fire department, Eleanor or whomever come in here, they measure the room, they'll say this room can have a maximum occupancy of 100 people?
Correct.
And that's based on means of egress?
Egress, square footage.
But that same policy or procedure does not apply to homes?
Not for residential.
Lighting on your streets, all I can do is apologize. I don't know what's going on with fixing lights in the street. It has become a priority for me to figure out how we can get lights repaired out in these streets. We absolutely need somebody assigned to that because I'm getting, I think all of us are getting that type of information. Well, it's not a matter of who can answer it. She's asked this months ago. And I've gone out there. One of the things that, as you notice, you're, the light poles that you have are different than the vast majority of them in the city. I don't know if the electrical vendor even fixed your lights. Can you answer that, Mr. Galante? You, you've seen the lights that's on the block. I've sent you the pictures.
So, these are decorative, the lights at Beverly are decorative fixtures. We sent the request, I believe, to Chief Leitner about a year and a half ago. He wanted us to look at the comp plan. Eventually, we got authorization to repair them. We did tell the contractor to go repair them, but there's a lead time. So, it's my understanding, the lights are on order. So, when the lights come in, they'll get repaired. They're not like your typical Cobra heads where someone could come out, replace the light, and have them in stock. These are not in-stock items. And the other reason, I believe you wanted to look at the comp plan is because we looked at a more cost-effective fixture. Some of the fixtures we have, a light in the downtown could cost $10,000 just for the fixture. So, when a light breaks, if it falls apart, it's very expensive to replace that one light. So, we do look at alternatives that are very similar to what's out there, to not lose the look and the aesthetics of the downtown or any, any area in the city.
Yeah. And that is kind of the answer I thought I'd get. You know, some of these neighborhoods, in order to make them look a little more appealing, don't have the regular light that you see on a light pole that just kind of comes over and bends down. You know, they have the decorative lights. They're great when they're new, they're great when they're work. But when they break, they break. Anything is better than nothing. So, it is a matter of going out to neighborhoods like yours and seeing if putting a light pole with a Cobra head on it is the more reasonable solution there. It really is. It's the whole fixture. I, yes, yes. It's not the standard light that's around in the city. All right, where are we? Uh-oh.
I'd like to say something. Good evening, everyone. I, I think that it's a disservice to the residents in the city of Chester to omit the question and answer portion of the meeting. I know that we are transitioning, but I know that in previous times, the residents could come and they could address their concerns. To me, it seems like if they would just be passed along to someone else, then they wouldn't, those issues won't be dealt with with hopes that they'll just go away. What I encourage the residents to do is, is to keep coming, to keep addressing your concerns. Don't back down, whatever issues you have, bring them to the forefront so that they can properly be dealt with. One person cannot do it all, but I am in agreement with being able to correspond with one another in a respectful and timely fashion, omitting the comments from settings like this. I think it's a disservice, and I'm in agreement. It doesn't take a whole lot of time to get something done, especially if you know who to go to.
Is it Ms. Good?
Yes, I am. Hello. How you doing? I'm Teresa Good. I live in the 1300 block of Parker Street. And I'm my own block captain. I don't need anybody to sign. And my own, I'm my own block captain. I don't need nobody to sign me or be a block captain.
Oh, I'm signing you up.
When I'm coming here, I'm speaking for my neighborhood. And I have two, three problems in my area. One is parking. People got cones everywhere in my neighborhood. The second is I have two cars that I've been trying to get taken away for over a year. They don't live there, but they have the cars there and the policeman claims that it's nothing they can do. But I think something needs to change because it shouldn't be that because the car has a good sticker, it should be able to stay there for as long as it wants to, as long as the sticker is good. I think that part needs to be changed. I think if they don't live there and the cars are broken down, then they need to remove them. And my other problem is these landlords buying up these homes, doing all this remodeling. I've been calling the, uh, Ellen I for three months. They worked on this one house for three months to 10 o'clock at night, Saturday, Sunday, next door to a 94-year-old person. And I done told him several times, you know, but Ellen I, I've been calling them and I think people are living there. I don't think it's no certificate of occupancy because I have not seen nobody go in there and examine the houses that's there. It's 13, 10, I gotta count, 10, 12. I think it's either 13, 14, because I'm 10, 2, 4, yeah, 13, 14.
What street?
Parker Street.
Parker, okay.
Yeah. See, they're buying up the houses and they're remodeling them and I don't know what they doing to them. But that's the second time because if somebody was on the other side, they did the same thing. But you know, they were more respectful, you know, they, they were there. I said, I don't care because they were directly next to me. But if those other joggers was directly next to me, they wouldn't have been doing all that stuff. But the one directly, I told them, as long as you out there by four o'clock, I don't care what you do. You know what I'm saying? And they were there till four o'clock. So I think that the parking with those cars needs to be, they got trucks parked back there, big tractor trailers. People park their tractor trailers back there. We got trucks because we're off the side and nobody comes back there where we live in the flood area. So they come and they just park cars and, and different stuff like that. But we have a lot, I have a lot of senior citizens that live back there, a lot of homeowners. That's the only thing that saved my neighborhood is I have, still have a lot of homeowners where I live. So I think something needs to be done about those cars to be moved. I don't think they should, if they don't live there, I think they should be removed. I don't care what the sticker on there say or what, but that is, that is it.
Thank you.
And that's what I'm telling you.
Teresa, are there tractor trailers across the street where the?
No, they parking them on my street.
On your street?
You know where they tore the houses down? Well, they're parking them there, trucks, tractor trailers, and then Croger Park is loaded with them. You know, Croger Park too. But these other two, they need to go because we don't have no, um, parking because we have a lot of old. Like my sister can't visit me because I can't have nowhere for her to park. And then they got all these cones that they, everybody got out. And the police come back at three and four o'clock in the morning, they don't take up the cones, but they give somebody a ticket if they're parked near the fire hydrant.
Call me tomorrow.
I'mma call you.
Call me tomorrow.
Don't, 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 don't tell you, don't tell me to call you.
Call, call me tomorrow. I mean, you're not alone. Everybody in the city is looking for a solution to citywide parking issues. And we're looking to bring on a, a new parking management company very soon. I've got a B. Williams.
Brown Williams.
We got three minutes, sir. Let's get it in.
I should have ours. As long as y'all are with, I didn't wait on y'all, I could have been home looking at television. Now, what I'm over here for tonight, what I'm over here for tonight, but the sewer down there by me. You can sit on the boat sometime. Trash dumping in the back of the house again. You got some, when people move in these, are do they supposed to be inspected? I mean, I ain't see nobody inspect the house. 10 people are moving across the street from me, 10 people. And they, and they getting ready to move somebody in right now with Joe Farron is to live at.
Give me an address, sir.
Um, 2700.
2700.
West Sixth Street.
West Sixth.
And just move in 30, just move in 2631, just move in 6, 2630. Just move in 2618. Where, where else you want to know? I want to know, do y'all inspect? I went to the man personally and tell him, the damn tree limb, I just put a new roof on my house. Done bust a lip, uh, a hole in my back roof already. The tree is falling in the backyard. Done tear up my garage. Something need to be done. And like these people in here, they must know doing on my, live around Chester yet. Don't low rate the police because they doing a hell of a job here in Chester, I think. I think now, I don't have nothing to do with nobody else thinking. You go up there on Atticane Avenue. People shooting drugs like ninety gone west. You go in Washington DC down at the White House up in down there Saturday. They're doing the same thing. You go in Baltimore, they're doing the same thing on Pennsylvania Avenue. I can name, go in Richmond, Virginia, they were doing the same thing. You ain't gonna stop that drug shooting because they're, they're, the Republic bringing that thicken on right through the border. And you will not stop that. That happened ever since Riggan died. A lot of y'all too young to know about Riggan. But that happened ever since back there then, when they started sitting in the William Ben project and bending on and all around through here. And you ain't gonna stop that. Big dollar, big business. This morning, six o'clock, they were shooting where I used to live at. 1433 New Jersey Avenue in Washington DC. They shot three police here this morning. They shot two this afternoon in Philadelphia. Up there where they had the Kansas City, they shoot about 22 people to see me. Y'all must be sleeping. Y'all worrying about drugs shooting right y'all on the street? Hell, I ride through y'all, I don't see nothing through there. Them fellas got sneakers up there in the Texas store, selling for three and $400 and these blood chilling cat fold them knickies? Why would they bring that in a poor neighborhood like that? They ain't gonna give them never. And they don't build nothing here. Here go Chester, need a gem here. I talk about a gem on the west end, they got a whole lot of open field. They need a gem on the east side. They need a skating rink. When I come here to Chester, when John McClory was running this here, Chester, what's up? Next to me must come here when I've been here, since I've been here and walk all down, and we went down to the Ford place.
Your time has expired. What's your last point?
I know, I know.
Give me one more point.
I want to know if you coming back down my house and do to clean up them chairs and stuff, somebody done throw in the middle of the road. And come in and get somebody to clean that sewer. I can sit on my porch when it hot and neat. And y'all have a blessed night.
Mr. Saleem. Mr. Saleem is the last person, uh, who's, who signed up for, for public comment tonight. Come on up. Come on up. Yeah, come on. Come on.
Good evening. What evening, sir.
Good evening.
What evening, council members, uh? I've been doing this for quite a while and, um, I don't think that my bones are any weaker than they were a while ago. I, I just, you know. But anyway, the bottom line is, uh, I, I like to share with us. I like to share with us. I like to share with us. There's a lot has been said, there's a lot has been said. I think that we need to, uh, come together on a very important and, um, sincere effort in doing this. I think that, uh, let me say this to you. I had a note, but let, let, let me not go, go to my notes right now. I, um, anyone, eh, anyone who entered paradise do not want to leave it. And we can also say it like, eh, taste of honey is worse than none at all. So these people are actually, some of them had entered paradise and they do not want to leave it, to go away from this. What we were doing, we're going to continue going forward with this, with, but to have our Lord. A taste of honey is the same thing. You do not want to go back. There were those, God want for us complete life, complete life. A life that is of material life and spiritual life. We do not want to stop at the material life. We want to go on to the spiritual life, if you, if you can understand that. There were those who, um, wanted this and they made some effort in, uh, sending this down the road. And with, uh, simple sayings like the old one-two punch. If this is with one hand and God got two hands for us, then we want to, uh, activate the one, the old one-two punch. Uh, so this is what we, we want to do. This is what we want to do. And don't worry, don't worry, don't worry. God is, he's in charge. He's in charge. He's, he's in charge. Jesus and David, David and Jesus, they had enemies that they love. But the believers in our Lord, we going to keep on moving. So this taste of honey and, uh, we're not going to leave it. The day of decision, God is healing the soul. And when you come up against a decision in your soul, you will have to make the right decision the day of decision. That's all I ask. And this is going, we going to go, but we are going to go. My shoul, Lord, shukran.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem. Three minutes is never enough for Mr. Saleem. Is it Michael? Michael Lewis?
Hello, hello. Good evening. My name is Michael Lewis. I live at 10 East Fifth Street here downtown in Chester. I came back to Chester eager, driven to do any and everything I can as a designer or artist, even as a local advocate, whatever I can to just keep my hands busy. I'm thriving. I love it, but I'm not walking downtown. I drive to Show Wells. I drive to Chester Pizzeria. I drive to Taco, Taco, uh, you know. I'm driving. I live right here. I'm not gonna walk. I took the spirit to walk one day and I just said, this is all I got? This is all that I got to look forward to? Now I'm actually thriving. Got to pay more in taxes, but I'm thriving and this is all I got to look forward to. So I wonder, now you might not be giving answers, but is anything gonna happen at the riverfront? Can I expect something more? Is this it? I came and got to try to look for a design studio. I had to go to Philly. Why? It's only two designers here that's trying to, trying to do more. So now I'm back here, I'm still trying. So I said, I'm coming to this meeting today because I want to know what's gonna happen. It's in the next two, four years, can I have some hope that we gonna see something? Because this new money, I'm touching it, but I'm, I'm still used to the same thing my mom and grandmom had. And it's basic. I want a little something. I got something that's real nice and cute, but I want something that's amazing, at least for what I could afford. But I'm not gonna get here. I lost my become a homeowner, dumb, had to deal with y'all dealing with, and now I want to deal with that. So my question is, is there gonna be any real development in the city of Chester? In the next two, four years? Or maybe 10 years, but I'm not staying for that. That's all.
Sasha Edward.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Sasha. I live on 317 Blue Street. Um, and I noticed a couple of things since I've been here in, sorry, for the past two years. Um, so I noticed that there are potholes destroying cars as well as, um, my friends that come from Chester County in Coatesville. They drive here and they're like, oh my God, the potholes here are crazy. And we may joke about it, but we're serious. Um, also for the past two summers, I kind of noticed that there are idling trucks. I know that there's like two warehouses, the one that just recently built and the one, I think it's, what it's called, Fishers?
Miss Sasha, I can hardly hear you. You said, I can't hear you. I know you said something about potholes.
Yeah.
And what did you say after that?
Uh, there's a lot of potholes.
Besides that, I mean, just now, what are you talking about?
Oh, um, idling trucks.
Oh, idling trucks.
Yeah, um, that sitting idle right across the street from our home. And I know there's a warehouse there called Fishers and there's one being built across the way. And, um, I was just wondering if there could be a sign there that lets them know not to idle there because the pumes from the trucks are crazy. So my neighbor has asthma. I have a thyroid condition, so does my mom. Just thought it would be a sign there. Um, recycling, recycling trucks? I was told by my neighbor that recycling comes every Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday? I have not seen any. We pick out our recycling Monday, I think, and they take it and mix it with the trash in the same truck. And we, I've never seen a recycling truck. Also, there is abandoned home right around our house and I've seen two crackheads go at it from our back window. And there's a ton of trash and it's not safe to walk back there neither. So I saw something going on back there, but nothing was finished. They just stopped as soon as the rain started one summer. That was it. So there were second trucks, the potholes, idling signs, no littering. We can't expect that on our block or in Chester, period.
He'll take you.
I'm sorry, what's your name? Okay, all right. Anybody else send you to talk to about that? Because you'll see me again. I'm 37 years old, by the way. So you'll see me again. And you're the chief police, right? And you are fire chief? Okay. And you are back there? I've heard your name a couple of times. Okay, cool. Okay. That's my business. Thank you.
All right, thank you. To Michael and Sasha, the last two people who commented, they represent a lot of people who are moving into Chester from, from all over. Coatesville, where you coming from, Mike? You're from here, but you said you moved back here. Where, where have you been? In Dover. Okay, so he's been close. We get a lot of Philadelphians moving here. I want everybody just to look at Chester like you're looking at Chester. Where, look at where we are right now. Mr. Williams, we're almost finished. I want you guys to see what, what you see and be honest with it. You see trash, you see potholes, you see abandoned buildings, you're not seeing a lot of business growth. I want you guys to let that burn into your heads because up here is a mayor and council that are committed to changing that. So look at us next year, look at us the year after, look at our 2035, uh, vision plan. We are working every day to change the conditions that are going on. We are working every day to change the conditions that are going on in this town right now. We need your help, of course, but we need a lot of help and the help is going to have to come from outside of Chester. You know, my, my role right now as mayor is to chase the money, chase the money. There's money out here for a lot of the situations that we're suffering with and, and we haven't done a really effective job at, at bringing it in. But now more than ever with, with our president, Joe Biden, and from what I've seen in my little trip to, to Washington DC, this infrastructure act, the inflation reduction hack, I mean, there's all this money that little towns, little dinky towns like Chester, especially environmental justice towns like Chester are, I mean, we get points on the application just because of who we are. We just have to apply. Even internally, we have to increase our capacity to, uh, identify grants, write grants and, and execute on grants. Uh, we're getting a lot better and a lot smarter as to how we address the myriad, the multitude of issues that we're dealing with. And I can't, I gotta go back to the issue that we're, we're getting a lot of residents, unlike you two who have just moved back here. We're getting people moving here who bring nothing to the table, nothing. They're just taking from others. When we talk about these migrants who are showing up on buses, when I go to a place like, uh, East Side Ministries and they call me and say, we used to have enough food for the people who came every week or every couple of days a week for the feeding ministries that we have, uh, it would last till four or five o'clock. Now we're out of food at twelve because they don't judge, they feed anybody who's in line. They don't care if you're Venezuelan, Guatemalan, Honduran or Fifth Street. You know, they're gonna take care of you. You see city team over there. On the one side at some time, you know, depending on what your ilk is, you can be embarrassed to see a line of people around the corner waiting for a meal. But if you have any kind of heart at all, you have to recognize that these people are being fed by an organization that's in this town, taking care of people. We've got to do a better job of really focusing on the areas to make Chester residents, the people who have been here for years who remember, oh, my man left already, the good old days when we could go down Avenue of the State and buy Buster Browns and Flag Brothers and, and, you know, all that cool stuff. It's, you know, those days are gone. But, you know, many people and then many people I talk to who come through Chester say it looks like a town that, that time has stopped. Okay? This mayor and council is, are, not is, are committed, you know, in the time that we have to serve, to at least turn this ship to, to make some moves. You asked about the waterfront, the beautiful Chester waterfront. I mean, you stand out there on an early morning day, watching the sunrise over the Commodore Barry Bridge. There's not a prettier place in the county. We are the county's riverfront community. We're not just Chester's riverfront community. We need everybody involved. We got a big gift from our president just a few weeks ago when he says that liquefied natural gas export terminal cannot come to Chester. That gives us an opportunity to do something now before that pause is lifted. So we got work to do up here and we're, we're, we're counting on you guys to, to stay on our butts about it. You know, we're, we're big, we're big boys and girls and we can take it. But we also have to let you know, keep you aware. We're, we're putting together a whole new communication plan for the city that will promote our city the way it needs to be promoted. We do have assets that are great, but we also have some things around here that have to be fixed. How do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? Let me tell you, we're chewing away every day, guys. We are really working hard to make the small incremental changes that we can with the money that we have, with the resources that we have. We need partners, not just you guys as partners, but we need people from the county stepping in and the state stepping in and the fit stepping in. That's what I'm out there doing. That's what I'm out there doing. And believe me, they're responding. When you talk about development, I can't tell you how many developers are knocking on our doors. Some are rinky-dink, some are heavy hitters, you know? And, and we have to amass land and get rid of blight and put plots of land together so they can build these things. It's coming. We're just two weeks, two months in. But it, it's looking super promising. So hang in there with us, give us a little grace. We're trying to figure things out up, up here, you know, as a mayor and council. But what we're not trying to figure out is our commitment, our love for the city and our, you know, just, I, let's say, commitment again to turn things around. Any of you guys want to speak to that?
I just want to say one thing, I really.
Hold on, hold on. Any of you guys want to speak to that?
I'll, I'll, I'll address that, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm somebody that has since, we have started this transition and since we've been here as a new mayor and council since January second, two thousand twenty-four. Um, I'mma speak for myself when I say I've been the one that's been preaching unity and commitment, something that the mayor has just mentioned while he's sitting up here. Um, and that's something that we're striving to do every day. You know, we fall short on it sometimes and that's me being transparent with you as residents. Um, we do fall short on that, but we're working every day to figure it out so that we can best serve you all the way you need to be served, not how some people think you should be treated and, no, 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 no. We're not here to think for you. No, we're all adults here. We're here to listen to our community and then supply what you all need. And that's something that I say, I can say that we as a mayor and council are striving to do every day. We are falling short every now and again, but it's, it's getting better, so.
I'd just like to say that, um, I'm really happy and proud about our business owners or merchants downtown Chester and, um, really appreciate what you have to offer. I enjoy, um, patronizing the, your establishments and I like to encourage the neighbor, the community to encourage and patronize our merchants downtown. They need your support. And, um, I'd like to see mayor and council, the, um, block by block program instituted where we get together with all departments and we go to a particular area and we clean up, you know, along with the neighbors or the community members. I remember going to Highland Garden one time and we had a group of students, college students, and they were cleaning, 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 and people were sitting on their porch, oh, you missed that. But I mean, we all need to be engaged, we need to work together and, uh, try to do, um, clean up our neighborhoods. It's on us. You know, when we were younger, our mothers had us sweeping the porch, the steps, the sidewalks, down off of the curve, the grades and everything. We had to sweep up everything. So I'd like to see us get back to that because we have to maintain what we have, you know? Chester can and will become beautiful again. We have a lot of housing stock where we have landlords in here or property owners who are not taking care of their properties. So I believe that L and I and others are addressing that, you know? We know we have problems with the streets, with potholes and what have you, but, um, you know, that's going to be addressed as well. So I'd just like to thank you for your support. And Teresa, I, I know you're the block captain up your way and, and a darn good one too. So, you know, I'd like to, I look forward to working with all of you.
It better be two seconds. Go.
All I want to say is I really enjoyed this meeting tonight. I really did. I really did, you know, respectful of the people, you know, they went over and you were respectful, even if they now look like they just tolerate you, but I really enjoyed this meeting tonight.
Thank you. Anna, thank you, Teresa. Let, let's talk about that block captain piece one more time because you say you're a block captain anyway. But one of the things that we want to do is we really are looking to formalize this block captain, uh, piece. We're looking for people, maybe not necessarily on every block, but somebody who could speak on behalf of a block or a couple of blocks or four blocks. But we want to plug you into City Hall. We want to provide you with resources.